I call this meeting of Towne Shippai School District 211 Board of Education to order. May we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Cavell.
Here.
Mr. Kramer.
Here.
Mr. Dombrowski.
Here.
Mrs. Klimkowicz. Mr. Rosenbloom.
Here.
Mr. Young.
Here.
Mr. LaFever.
Here. Our first item of business tonight is a closed session. We have a suggested motion that the board will enter closed session to discuss minutes of meetings lawfully closed under the Open Meetings Act, appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees, matter relating to an individual student, collective negotiating matters between the public body and its employees or their representatives, and probable or imminent litigation against affecting or on behalf of the public body. Can someone please move that?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Cavell.
Aye.
Mr. Kramer.
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski.
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom.
Aye.
Mr. LaFever.
Aye. All right, we're gonna return to open session here. Can we please have a motion from the board to return to open session?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Cavell.
Here.
Mr. Kramer.
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski.
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Yeah.
Mr. LaFever.
Aye. All right, our first item of business now is recognitions. For that, I'll turn it over to our superintendent, Dr. Kates.
Good evening and welcome to everyone tonight. Several years ago, we began recognizing District 211 students and graduates who serve in our nation's military ranks at Board of Education meetings. At this time, I'd like to ask Private Xavier Andrews to please come forward. Private Andrews is currently a senior at William Framt High School. In January, he enlisted as an infantryman in the Illinois Army National Guard. After graduation in May, he will be attending basic combat training at the U.S. Army Maneuver Center of Excellence in Fort Benning, Georgia. Following completion of infantry training, Private Andrews will be assigned to the Elgin-based Company B, 1st Battalion, 178th Infantry Regiment. Once Private Andrews returns home, he has plans to attend Western Illinois University in McComb. As a member of the Illinois National Guard, he will be entitled to the Illinois National Guard grant, which covers 100% of the tuition at any state school. Private Andrews, on behalf of Framt High School, and the Board of Education, and the entire District 211 community, I thank you for your service to our community and to our country. Would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, for which it stands, one nation, under God, with liberty and justice for all.
This evening, we also have several state award winners to recognize and a couple other honorees. At this time, I'd like to ask Director of Athletics and Activities Eric Lankowski to the podium.
Thank you. Board of Education and Dr. Kates, thank you for taking some time to honor two really talented athletes and a whole slew of talented musicians tonight. Students, as your sponsor introduces you, please walk forward, receive your award, and stand next to your podium. For obvious reasons tonight, we will dispense with any handshaking and draping of medals. We will hand you your medal tonight. Additionally, any family members that are here, please stand when your students are introduced so that you can be recognized. Helping me present tonight, our Palatine Principal, Tony Medina; Fram Principal, Kirk Teniper; and Assistant Principal, Eric Dolan; Conant Principal, Julie Novick; and Assistant Principal, Mark Langer; and Schaumburg Principal, Tim Little; Assistant Principal, Michelle Napier; and Athletic Director, Marty Manning. So we'll get started. Jeff Keskey. Jeff Keskey is in his fifth year teaching wellness in District 211 and is in his second year as the head coach of the Fram Wrestling Program. Mr. Keskey wrestled and played baseball at Augustana College before he transferred to Northeastern Illinois where he earned his physical education and health degree. Mr. Keskey.
Good evening. I'm the head wrestling coach at Framt High School. I'm here to introduce Senior Isaiah Pettigrew, along with his mother, Shalonda. On February 22nd... On February 22nd, Isaiah finished fourth place in the 195-pound weight class at the IHSA 3A State Championship in Champaign, Illinois. Isaiah is a 27th All-Stater in Framt Wrestling history. This accomplishment alone doesn't tell the whole story about Isaiah Pettigrew, though. This year, he finished with a 37-4 overall record. He became a two-time MSL Conference Champion. He also won the Prospect Tournament, the Palatine Tournament, the Barrington Sectional Tournament. Three of his four losses this year came to All-State wrestlers, two of them being nationally-ranked. Isaiah was voted as our most valuable wrestler. His teammates describe him as hard-working, committed, and a leader of the program. This winter, Isaiah led our weightlifting morning sessions. Isaiah is currently committed to North Central College to wrestle and study computer engineering. The Fram Wrestling Program is proud to have Isaiah be all-in when it comes to the development of our program. Congratulations to Isaiah Pettigrew and his mother, Shalonda.
All right, next I'll bring forward Julie Thomas, Schaumburg High School. Julie Thomas is in her second year as an assistant bowling coach at Schaumburg High School. Julie currently works as a private therapeutic day school as a second-grade special education teacher. Thank you for that. And Julie is also a proud graduate of District 211. Julie.
Here with her parents, Kristi and Tom, is Haley Frick. Haley led the Saxons to a third-place team finish in the MSL and a second-place individual medal for the season. Captain of the team, she carried the Saxons to Regional, and although the team was not able to advance to Sectionals, Haley took home the first-place medal individually. At Sectionals, Haley placed sixth place overall, but was the second individual to advance to State. Haley, staying focused and driven at State, found the sweet spot, striking in the first nine frames, and walked off the lane that game with her season-high game of 266 and a high series of 706. Friday's afternoon remarkable bowling placed Haley in first place overall, advancing to Saturday. Saturday was nothing but a tough day of breaks on the lane, but Haley did not have that stop her from doing what she knows best: staying focused, calm, relaxed, and making good shots regardless of how the pins fall. Haley had a grand total for the state tournament of 2,576, bringing home a second-place All-State medal. It has been a fun, exciting season for Haley, and I can personally always count on her for a good laugh and fun time. Congratulations, Haley, on your successful season.
All right, now we'll get started with the members of our band and orchestra and choir. We'll start with Yum Pham. Since joining District 211 in 2004, Yum Pham has taught at Hoffman Estates, Schaumburg, and Palatine High School. Yum is currently the Director of Orchestras and the Music Department Chair at Palatine High School, where she sponsors the Chamber Singers Chamber Strings Extracurricular Orchestra, the Mariachi Club, and the Tri-M Music Honors Society. Yum.
It is my great pleasure to welcome Senior Trombonist Matthew Ritterbush, who is accompanied this evening by his parents CJ and Mary Catherine Ritterbush. You'll probably be hearing something similar to this all evening, but one of the standout things that I remember about Matthew is after his first audition for our D-211 Honors Orchestra, when he didn't make it in, he was the first student to my door the next morning after results were posted, saying, "Do you have the feedback sheet? I want to know how I can get in next year." Right? And it's this kind of determination that I think is the calling card of all of our students that achieve at such a high level. You can recognize his contributions and leadership as a drum major of our band and in so many other areas of our department: in the musical pit, in full orchestra, in the jazz band. And we want to really congratulate Matthew for his high honor of placing first chair trombone in the All-State Honors Orchestra this year. Our next student to be recognized is Hayden Williams, accompanied by his mother, Barbara Yet another moment is this fall, when we had our first little kind of touch-based meeting and seeing how IMEA auditions were going, and we just had that hard conversation about, "How much have you actually been practicing these excerpts? And do you realize what level you need to be playing at in order to set yourself apart to make it into District, much less IMEA?" And he really took that heartfelt, you know, advice to heart, and with that, he was able to make it into the All-State Honors Orchestra. We also want to recognize Hayden. He has talent as a composer, and this year, he placed second in the solo piano category for his composition. And he is such a wonderful role model for his classmates in terms of his musicianship and the consistency of his playing. So again, thank you so much for all you bring to class every day and for your excellent honor this year at Allstate.
Marla Caballero is in her 26th year of teaching music at District 211. She began at both Palatine and Framt, but is currently teaching only at Framt. In 2014, Marla was named the Outstanding School Teacher of the Year of the Illinois Chapter of the American String Teachers Association. And Marla is also a proud District 211 graduate.
Thank you, Dr. Kates and Board of Education, for this opportunity to recognize all of these musicians. It is my pleasure tonight to recognize our Framt Orchestra and Band students. These students were selected for the ILMEA All-State Honors Orchestra and Band. These students are hard-working, independent, they are problem solvers, and they are each committed to making music to the best of their ability. In addition, and most importantly, they inspire others to do the same. Unfortunately, three of our Framt musicians are not able to attend, but I'd like to just do a little shout-out to them. Gina Kang is a senior violinist, sophomore violinist Jason Young, and sophomore Anika, flute player, were not able to be here tonight, but were selected. At this time, I would like to recognize Colin Ariano. Colin is joined tonight with his parents Erica and Scott. Colin is a senior trombonist and was selected to perform in the All-State Honors Band. He is also a very talented jazz trombonist and was selected for the ILMEA District 7 Jazz Band I this past October. His favorite memories from Allstate include playing for the largest crowd in his entire high school career and getting to know the other Framt musicians through conversations and games of Crazy Eights. Colin has contributed in so many ways and has made a huge impact on the Framt Music Department and bands over the past four years. Colin, we wish you the best and are confident that you will do well wherever you land next Next is junior percussionist Nick Tater, who is joined by his parents Rose and Paul Nick was selected this year for the All-State Honors Band. This past November, he was selected as principal percussionist of the ILMEA District 7 Honors Band. Nick is an outstanding overall percussionist and consistently assists younger and less experienced students with their percussion skills. I see him in the music department all the time, which is good. Nick greatly enjoyed his experience at Allstate. One of his favorite memories was seeing all the other Allstate percussionists insist that there is a reason to own seven different triangle beaters. Congratulations, Nick. We're glad that you're just a junior and look forward to seeing you for the rest of this year and the years to come. Congratulations. Next is Tom Philippuke, senior violist, and he is here with his parents, Mr. and Mrs. Tom has been a leader in the Framt Orchestra program since his freshman year. He looks for every opportunity to make music and elevates any group that he is a part of. While at Allstate this year, he was inspired to move more while playing music. Play... Sorry, while playing. There we go. However, his favorite memory was remaining undefeated in chess against Sam and Jason. In addition to playing the viola, Tom is an active and excellent pianist and has studied piano privately for many years. He has not taken private viola lessons, but because of his excellent musical skills and training in piano, he has transferred that and works really hard at viola as well. He is planning to pursue piano performance and is waiting for the results of his auditions at Indiana, Eastman, and Cleveland? Oh, yes. Institute. Congratulations, Tom. We will miss you. Finally, Yenna Kim, junior violinist, is here with her parents, Mr. and Mrs. Kim. I have always admired and respected Yenna's musical and technical abilities as a violinist, but this year, it has been exciting to hear and see Yenna grow in her confidence and independence as a violinist and leader. Although she enjoyed playing and learning new music at Allstate, Yenna's favorite memory this year of Allstate was time spent with her roommates Gina and Andrea. Congratulations. Thank you, Yenna. Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to Conant High School. Tim Cole. Tim Cole is in his 10th year of teaching choir at Conant High School. He also serves as Department Chair of Music. Tim was a director of the variety show and the vocal director of the musical. And outside of the school, Tim also directs the Schaumburg Youth Choir. Tim.
First, I would like to introduce Sophie Duveris, who is accompanied by her parents, Mara and Angelo. Sophie has not only been a choir student for four years, but has also been a valuable part of our orchestra program. In addition to singing and playing the violin, Sophie has also developed valuable skills as a piano player that help her lead our choral program. This well-rounded development of her musicianship has been put to great use, as she is a student intern for the orchestra, as well as a leader among her peers in the choir classes. She is obviously a talented musician and has a work ethic to match her skill set. Sophie intends to major in music when she gets to college and is in the final stages of auditioning for different collegiate programs. I am positive that she has used her time wisely in high school to develop the necessary skills to thrive in her next steps. Sophie can confidently enter college as she continues to develop as an outstanding musician who will positively impact the lives of others with her music. Congratulations, Sophie, on singing with the Honors Allstate Choir. The comments for the next three students have been prepared by Conant's Orchestra Director, Devon Godzicki. First, I would like to recognize Sean Yoshihara, who is here with his parents, Peter and Miwako. Sean is currently a sophomore at Conant High School. He has been playing the cello for six years, and this is his second year as a member of the Conant Symphony Orchestra. Sean has participated in the ILMEA Festival for two consecutive years and recently served as the Assistant Principal Cellist for District 7. This year, Sean placed sixth chair in the Allstate Honors Orchestra Cello Section. Bravo. This will also be his second year participating in the District 211 Honors Orchestra, where he will serve as the Principal Cellist. Sean is also the Principal Cellist and a core member of the Midwest Philharmonic Orchestra under the baton of Taka Matunaga. He will be performing at the Chicago Symphony Center with the orchestra as a participant of the Chicago International Musical Music Festival in April. He enjoys chamber music and has performed in several fundraising concerts and has experience participating in chamber music camps. He studies under Brian Hoffman at the Midwest Conservatory of Music in Schaumburg. Next, I would like to recognize James Prusel, who is here with his parents, Walter and James has been playing viola for years. Growing up in a musical family, he started learning violin at age three under the teaching of his mother. He currently studies with Oberlin Conservatory Professor Peter Sloick. He placed fifth and seventh respectively in the ILMEA Honors Orchestra in 2018 and 2019. And in 2018, he was Assistant Principal of the National Association for Music Education Honors Orchestra. This year, James was principal viola in the Allstate Honors Orchestra, which is an amazing achievement. Also an avid composer, his caprice in G minor placed first in the 2019 ILMEA Composition Competition in the Solo-to-Chamber Ensemble category. The summer camps he has attended include Crado Chamber Festival, Castleman Quartet Program, and Harpa International Music Academy. He plans to major in viola performance and minor in composition when he attends college. Besides music, James enjoys reading, writing, and baking. He is captain of Conant's Cross Country and Track Teams. Next, I would like to recognize Makiba Karida, who is here with her mother, Yumi. Makiba is a senior at James B. Conant High School and has been playing the violin for 12 years. She has been selected for the District 7 ILMEA Orchestra every year since 2014 and honors Allstate ILMEA Orchestra for three years. She has served as Concert Mistress for the District 7 ILMEA Orchestra in 2014, 2017, and 2019. This year, she was the Concert Master of the Allstate Honors Orchestra, an accomplishment which speaks volumes of her talent and passion. During her junior year at Conant High School, she was selected for the All-National Symphony Orchestra as a first violinist. She has also served as Concert Mistress for the D-211 Honors Orchestra for three years and Concert Mistress for the Schaumburg Youth Orchestra, which she has been a part of since 2009. Last year, Makiba was chosen as the first-place winner for the High School Music Competition at the University of Illinois at Urbana-Champaign. Recently, Makiba was selected as the Senior Division Winner of the Midwest Conservatory of Music Competition and will be performing the Sabaleus Violin Concerto with the Midwest Philharmonic Orchestra in May. She will also perform the Carmen Fantasy with our Conant Orchestra. Makiba plans to study violin in college. Besides playing the violin, Makiba enjoys spending her time traveling to Japan, cooking, and making bread.
All right. LeAnn Roder Manson. LeAnn has been teaching for 18 years, seven of those she has served as the Assistant Band Director at Conant High School. She also directs the Jazz Lab Band, teaches AP Music Theory, directs the Pitt Orchestra for the Conant Musical, and is the sponsor of the Tri-M Music Honor Society. LeAnn.
I am here to introduce Nate Mathew with his father, Jay, and his mother, Nimmy. Nate is a sophomore who has worked incredibly hard to attain a role as the section percussionist in the Honors Orchestra at Allstate this year. He participates at Conant in our marching band, jazz band, and combo, Pitt Orchestra, and any opportunity for full orchestra experiences. Nate also takes lessons at least twice a week and participates in the Chicago Youth Symphony. Notably, he auditioned for and was selected by the Chicago Musical Pathways Initiative for a scholarship and guidance from their staff. Their purpose is to identify and develop motivated students from underrepresented backgrounds for acceptance into top-tier classical music programs in preparation for careers as professional musicians. Nate's most recent accomplishment has been acceptance with scholarship to the famous Interlock and Arts Camp in Michigan, where he will work most of the summer on strengthening his skills. I have never had a student work harder to attain his goals, and I can only assume we'll be back here for the next two years as well. Congratulations.
All right, and we'll finish up with Vinnie Annandino. Vinnie has been the Band Director at Schaumburg High School since 2011 and a Director of Bands and the Music Department Chair since 2014. Vinnie has the distinction of probably being the most confused staff member in the fall with degrees from three different Big Ten universities: Northwestern University, Illinois, and the University of Michigan, so I don't know who you're cheering for, but...
Along with his parents, LeAnn and Rick, it is my pleasure to introduce Mr. Reese Barlow. Reese has checked off a lot of accomplishments on one of the most difficult instruments in the band. He is principal horn player in the Schaumburg High School Wind Symphony, a member of the District 211 Honors Orchestra, Honor Band, and Schaumburg Youth Symphony Orchestra, and has numerous IHSA Sol and Ensemble Division 1 ratings. And as of January, he was fifth chair horn in the Allstate Honors Band. He has quite a resume, and he's only a sophomore. Outside of his horn playing, Reese also plays trumpet in our Jazz Lab Band. He takes several accelerated courses and is also quite handy. He's involved in autos, gaming club, and boys soccer. So we really look forward to following Reese's progression as a student and a musician in the years to come. And on behalf of Susan Carlson, the Director of Orchestras at Schaumburg High School, along with his parents, Scott and Kamiko, it's my pleasure to introduce Mr. Matthew Nolan. This past January, Matthew took his third and final trip to Peoria. Each year, he has been a member of the Allstate Honors Orchestra. Additionally, he has been a stellar leading member of the District 211 Honors Orchestra for all four years. Last week, as one of the concerto competition winners at Schaumburg, he beautifully performed Samuel Barber's Violin Concerto with the SHS Orchestra. Last year, he was part of the NAFMI All-National Honors Orchestra in Orlando, Florida. And it's here where he was greatly inspired by the guest conductor, Jean Montez, who emphasized the importance of unity through music and continuing the legacy of orchestral performance. With that inspiration in mind, Matthew started to volunteer much of his time in improving the Midwest Philharmonic Orchestra, where he has been Concert Master for the past two years. He has worked hard to transform the orchestra in a number of ways. He has been involved in the marketing and advertising, as well as starting a new online ticket program for the orchestra. Matthew is an outstanding leader and is always looking to improve, whether it is on his instrument or in other avenues. We know his talent, attention to detail, and his entrepreneurial mindset will take him far down whatever career path he chooses to travel.
Every high school student who prepares for college is aware of the importance placed on standardized college entrance exams, including the Scholastic Aptitude Test known as the SAT. The SAT is comprised of tests in mathematics, critical reading, and writing. Each year, the SAT is taken by nearly 2 million students nationally, and of those, only about 300 achieve the highest possible score. Tonight, I'm pleased to say that we have a District 211 student from Framt High School who has earned the highest possible score on the SAT. On behalf of the Board of Education, High School District 211, I'd like to congratulate our student on this outstanding achievement. President, Mr. Bob LaFever, will present our student with the certificate in just a moment. At this time, I'd like to ask Framt High School Mathematics Teacher Jerry Moon to introduce this exceptional student and speak a little bit about this outstanding achievement.
Good evening. It's my honor and pleasure to introduce Pavin, who is joined by his parents, Mr. Venkatesh and Mrs. Seema Pandarangi, tonight. I've had the great pleasure of getting to know Pavin very well over the years. First, he was in my Honors Algebra II class when he was just an eighth grader coming to Framt to take math. Then, again, in my AP Calc BC class last year when he was just a sophomore. And in addition, I've also had the privilege of working with Pavin over the past three years as the head coach of the Fram Chess Team. Pavin has excelled in this area as well, representing Framt at the IHSA State Chess Tournament for the past three years now. Recently, I have been particularly impressed by Pavin's independent project, which involves detecting malaria in underserved patients by using machine learning algorithms that he taught himself and implemented to analyze pictures of blood samples, which, for example, could be sent to a doctor via cellphone. It's truly amazing stuff. And to me- And to me, the most impressive part is that Pavin does all of this quietly and humbly, without any fanfare, just motivated by the desire to be the best version of himself, whether others are watching or not, especially when others are not watching. Pavin, you have such an exciting future ahead of you. This is just one of many successes along the way. I'm so proud of you. Congratulations.
The Congressional App Challenge, now in its fifth year, is a public effort to encourage students to learn how to code through annual competitions hosted by members of Congress for their district. Participating students code original applications for the chance to be selected for recognition by their member of Congress and have their work displayed in the Capitol Building in Washington, DC. I'm proud to say that we have a student from Conant High School who won the app competition in Illinois's 8th Congressional District. Board President, Mr. Lefever, will present our student with the certificate for this honor in just a moment. At this time, I'd like to ask Conant High School Mathematics Teacher Rich Cortez to come forward to the podium. Rich is here this evening to introduce us to our outstanding young man, to tell us briefly about his honor.
I'd like to introduce John Wadey. He's accompanied with his parents, Mr. and Mrs. Wadey. Come on up. So I have the pleasure to know John for four years now. He's taken four years of computer science with me, and I've had him all four years. And I would be remiss if I didn't thank the administration for supporting computer science so much in our district, and we're one of the top districts in the entire state for computer science, and that's in part to the district's embracing what we do. That's allowed me to help him as much as I possibly can, but a lot of it is me getting out of his way while he does things like win the Congressional App Challenge. So his story actually starts with a couple of colleagues, his friends. And in December, they came in a class, they were mobile app development, and they came in, they were all excited, and like, "Oh, we did great. We got second in the Congressional App Challenge." And there was two of them in class, and they tied for second. I'm like, "Oh, that's really cool. Good job. So who got first?" And they didn't say anything. "I don't know. We have no idea." So we're sitting there thinking, "Well, you know, there's so many great schools in our area, you know, in our congressional district. It could have been anyone," right? So then, we're going along, going along. I have John later in the day, doesn't say anything. All of a sudden, January, his dad emails me a picture of him standing with Mr. Rajak Krishnamurti with a first-place ribbon for the Congressional App Challenge. He never told me in class. Just got a picture, and all of a sudden, like, "Oh, so he's got the first place." So his story started, you know, four years ago with an amazing aptitude for computer science, and he has gone skyrocketing above and above every single year. The app that he actually made was equivalent to Google App, Google Maps. So if you ever use Google Maps, essentially, you see yourself on a map. It shows you where you're at. It can direct you to where you want to go. And so John decided to do that for Conant High School. So you can actually go to the iOS Store, and you can download Conant Maps. And if you hold it on your iPad, it will tell you exactly where you're at in the building, shows the entire building, floor by floor, and it shows all the room numbers. As you walk around, it shows you where you're at. Not only that, but it can direct you to where you want to go. So if you're in Room 113, and you're a parent at open house, and you're like, "How do I get to 248?" You punch it in, and it shows you the route to take. And it goes up and downstairs and everything else. So this is absolutely phenomenal that he could do this. This is just one of many apps. He's actually got apps that are currently making money. He donated that one to Conant. But he's got apps that are currently making money out there, too. So just a few of these. Now, some of the, you might not know this term, but he's made a couple Jailbreak apps. And one of them allows you, if anyone have an iPhone, you can download his app, and you can have scrollable wallpaper, which, you know, they never had before. So he published that one. He's got a Jailbreak app that allows you to unlock your time feature on your iPhone. He's got something called Flux that he made, which is a social media app that allows you to fill out surveys that keep track of data across the country. And of course, he's a teenager, so he made a video game on both the iOS Store and on the Google Play Store. So you've got to have at least one video game in there. So overall, you can imagine, he is an amazing student. As a senior, I can't be more proud of him. He's come such a long way, and he has done phenomenal things, and you will read his name in the newspaper at some point, I can pretty much guarantee you. So congratulations, John.
That will conclude our recognitions for tonight. We'd like to thank you all for coming out to join us and have the opportunity to recognize all the wonderful students and their accomplishments. We're going to pause before we continue on with our meeting. We're going to pause for a couple minutes if you want to get any pictures while you're here, and then after that, we will continue on with our meeting. Thank you all for coming tonight. If we could come back to order, we'll continue on with our meeting. Next on our agenda is public comments. Is there anyone in the audience who is not included on the agenda or who did not sign in on the yellow speaker sheet, and you would like to address the Board of Education on a topic other than the E-Learning Day Program? If you could just raise your hand right now? Great, thank you. When we get through everybody on the sheet, I'll ask for you to come up next, please. So we welcome everyone and are pleased to listen to your comments tonight. It's important that you know this is a public board meeting and not a dialogue, so the board members will not be responding to your comments or answering questions tonight. As a reminder, the meeting is videotaped, so we ask that you value the procedures and decorum of our meeting and be respectful of those at the podium, so they may be heard. We ask that you not use individual student or staff names during your comments. When I call your name, please come forward to the podium. If you would state your name for the record. Please limit your comments to five minutes. And if you would like a response from our superintendent, if you would just leave your name and phone number with Mr. Kovak at the end of the table, please. All right. Our first person is Inga Baldwin. And if Inga is not here, we'll move on to our second person, Nimi George. If Nimi's also not here, we'll move on to Jan Thomas. Everybody signed up? Nobody came? Okay, sir, please come up to the podium. You're up. Thanks for staying with us.
Hello. My name's Zach Koshbin. I work for a company called Peer 360, and with all the issues going on with the outbreaks with the viruses, I just wanted to stop by and make District 211 aware of some of the services we have, as we've been contacting some of the districts within the area. We operate out of Lake Zurich, and we have a chemical-free patented process that is able to sanitize airborne and surface viruses within a sealed property in as little as 24 hours. We could do the same thing with vehicles, such as buses, gymnasiums, locker rooms. Any area with inside of a school, we have a treatment that is able to help prevent the spread and outbreak of any potential virus. I'm not aware of anything in District 211, but I at least wanted to stop by and make the district aware that there is some solutions out there that are chemical-free, use absolutely zero chemicals, and can cover the entire building without having to remove anything, such as computer equipment, electronics. Just people and pets would have to be out of the building for a very short period of time, and would cover every square inch of the property, including throughout the air duct system. I'm happy to leave my information, and we have been sending emails to some of the districts around. I'm sure we'll contact you guys or at least send you guys something in an email, too. And I'm happy to get on the phone or answer any questions anyone may have now or in the future as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right. Next item on our agenda is the public hearing for the E-Learning Day Program. Our first suggested motion is that the public hearing to hear comment on the proposal to authorize an E-Learning program that would enable our staff members to support students' continued learning experiences via electronic means in the event of emergency school closing days related to the spread of the coronavirus is now open. Can someone please move that?
So moved.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. The hearing is now open. Is there anyone who would like to address the board on the E-Learning Day Program? If so, please just come up to the podium. Okay, thank you. Then we have a suggested motion to close the public hearing. The motion is that the public hearing to hear comment on the proposal to authorize an E-Learning program that would enable our staff members to support students' continued learning experiences via electronic means in the event of emergency school closing days related to the spread of the coronavirus is now closed. Can someone please move that?
So moved.
All those in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? That motion carries. The hearing is closed. Next on our agenda, we have presentations, and the presentation tonight is on facility and capital improvement update. Dr. Cates, if you'd like to make introductions.
Sure. Each year, we present information to you surrounding the upcoming facilities projects. Those are critical projects that we present to you early in the spring, so that we can then have those planning and expenditures included into your approval, so that the work can begin in the summer. And tonight, we'll have two presenters update you about this. You're familiar with Lauren Hummel, our Chief Operating Officer, and John Paulman, our Director of Facilities and Purchasing. So we'll start with Lauren to introduce the projects to us.
Thank you. Well, each spring, we provide the board with an update on our facility upgrades that are prioritized in our life safety survey, as well as our strategic plan. With me tonight is Director of Facilities and Purchasing, John Paulman, as Dr. Cates just introduced, and we are pleased to present you with an update on the progress of our 10-year facility plan, while highlighting specifically those projects that we are looking forward to completing this summer. Our facilities play an integral role in our ability to provide a safe and supporting environment for our students, our staff, and our community. As we work to continuously assess our facilities, we prioritize the recommended updates based upon our overall facility condition, safety and code requirements, and needs that are driven by our programs. The district created a 10-year facility improvement plan prioritizing projects identified in the strategic plan, as well as projects that were approved on the 2019 Life Safety Survey. We are currently in year three of the plan, and we'll be discussing projects that are scheduled for year four tonight. Future capital improvement projects include continued renovations to our locker rooms and washrooms, a kitchen renovation, classroom renovations, and identifying the intended use of a portion of proceeds from the sale of our 60-acre property. Life safety projects are scheduled to be completed by the 23-24 school year and will be scheduled for completion according to a plan that continues to prioritize the safety of our facilities, while also providing for minimal disruption to our summer school programs that occur each year. Several facility updates are planned for summer 2020. Projects are categorized in one of three ways. Here, the categories are presented, including the major capital improvement projects, our life safety projects, as well as our operations and maintenance projects, which will all be accounted for within our annual operations and maintenance fund budget. Major facility projects include those that are prioritized, again, within our 10-year facility plan. Generally speaking, our life safety projects are those that are approved on our life safety survey, and our building operations and maintenance projects include those things which are more routine in nature, or include building upkeep, such as flooring and paving. Projects are scheduled to take place at each of our high schools this summer. However, Schaumburg High School is currently scheduled to be closed for summer school this year, and they will receive the greatest number of improvements that are planned with specific projects that are priorities that were identified on our life safety survey.
Conant High School is a final school to undergo improvements in their stadium turf and track. Originally installed in 2009, the stadium turf has surpassed its life expectancy and will be replaced this summer. The track will be resurfaced and restripped. The long jump track and pits to the east of the stadium will also be replaced. There will be additional improvements, including installation of fiber optics to the pressbox for additional technological capacity, installation of potable water sources around the track, and repaving of some areas adjacent to the stadium. The Conant turf and track project is similar in scope to the renovations recently finished at the other four schools and is scheduled to be completed before the start of the next school year. Fremont High School will be the second of our schools to undergo locker room renovations. The locker rooms are original to the school and currently contain open-style showers and original plumbing systems. Locker room improvements will include new plumbing, mechanical equipment, lighting, lockers with ADA accessible spaces, and private showers with changing areas. Over the past several years, our Family and Consumer Science curriculum has evolved to include commercial culinary experiences, which prepare students for various career pathways. While our curriculum has evolved, our facilities have remained essentially the same as their original design, functioning primarily as domestic cooking lab space. The updated lab will provide a commercial cooking area, complete with a variety of commercial kitchen equipment, a teacher demonstration station, and several traditional residential style kitchen labs, all with the intention to provide students with an array of exceptional in-class experiences. Renovations will include new ventilation, HVAC, and plumbing systems, a commercial exhaust hood with fire suppression system, cabinetry, and a full complement of room finishes. The lab will include new kitchen equipment, which will be primarily paid for through the use of Perkins Grant Funds. This work will commence at the end of the school year and will be completed prior to the start of the new school year. Roof sections at Palatine and Schaumburg High Schools were identified on the Life Safety Survey are in need of replacement, with work scheduled for this summer. At Palatine High School, all hot asphalt work is scheduled to be completed on student non-attendance days to minimize any impact on summer school. With no summer school at Schaumburg High School this year, roofing work is expected to cause minimal disruptions. All roof work will be completed prior to the start of the new school year. The concrete floor slab in the Fremont Auditorium hallway is in need of replacement, as identified on the Life Safety Survey. The compromised slab has resulted in damage to the associated walls, as you can see on the screen. Once the existing slab and walls have been removed, the sewer pipes below the compromised slab will be evaluated for final determination of whether the piping needs to be replaced or have a liner installed. Should the pipe need only to be lined, we will receive a credit of $80,000 from a plumbing contractor, reducing the overall cost of construction. The nature of this project will be extensive and is scheduled for completion prior to start of the next school year. Several mechanical equipment updates are planned for this summer as well. The two absorption chillers at Conant will be replaced with energy-efficient electric chillers. The chillers provide the majority of the cooling for the school. Air handling units at Fremont will be replaced, and Schaumburg will see the replacement of boiler equipment. All equipment was identified for replacement on the Life Safety Survey and is scheduled for completion prior to the start of the school year. The Life Safety Survey also identified several needs across our schools to improve electrical, architectural, and structural areas of the building. Exterior improvements at Schaumburg will consist of masonry repairs, including tuck pointing, lintel rehabilitation, and control joint sealant replacement. Several exterior doors are scheduled to be replaced at Schaumburg and Fremont, where the framed door integrity has become compromised. Electrical panels will be rebuilt at Schaumburg and Fremont, and new elevator control systems with associated electrical services and elevator car interiors will be installed at Schaumburg, Fremont, and Hoffman Estates High Schools. Each of these schools have a second elevator available for use as needed, including support of summer school at Hoffman Estates and Fremont. Structural steel repairs will be made at Schaumburg and Palatine. Life safety approval was granted in the spring of 2019, with a total project cost estimated at $24 million, including project fees. Following approval by the Illinois State Board of Education, approved project work began immediately in the summer of 2019. This chart provides a summary of the projects that have been completed or are scheduled to be completed this summer. It is anticipated the district will spend approximately $5 million for each of the next four years to ensure all health and life safety projects are completed within the required timeframe. We are currently working with our engineers and architects in planning projects to be completed in the summer of 2021. This information will be... This information will be shared with the Facilities Committee this fall. The third category of facility improvements are those which involve general improvements to our facilities, including building safety and security. Over the past several months, we have worked to install controlled access systems at the main entrances of our schools. The controls will permit visitor entry through the first set of vestibule doors but will require access to be granted electronically to enter through the second set of doors, allowing visitors' access into our schools. The Hoffman Estates school controlled access system is complete and the Conant High School system will be complete within the coming weeks. The next school scheduled to receive a controlled vestibule access is Fremd High School. Schaumburg and Palatine High Schools will require additional improvements to further restrict visitors in a secured vestibule prior to being granted access into the school. These projects will be completed over the summer and are scheduled to be operational by fall of 2020. In addition to the controlled vestibule access, additional RFID card readers are being installed on primary points of entry into our buildings, including the main entrance and the loading dock doors. Five additional blue emergency buttons, which allow direct notification to the police department, are being installed in all schools this year. This blue emergency button will be installed in large common areas such as media centers and cafeterias. Additional cameras will be added to ensure that each blue emergency call button is adequately covered. Additional improvements planned for the next year include integration of the PA system between the ALA and Academy North programs at North Campus.
In addition to our safety and security improvements, we plan to complete several other upkeep and improvement projects over the summer. Each year we conduct an assessment of our parking lots to determine areas in need of patchwork and paving. It is also planned that we will sand and screen several of our gymnasium and dance floors, along with continuing to replace areas of carpet in our buildings that show where in their current condition. It's planned to update the existing marquee at Schaumburg High School to a digital LED message board and also continue to replace items that are near the end of their lifecycle that are prioritized within the facility plan. We continue to look at our assessment of these various areas on an annual basis and review and recommend them based upon their overall condition and our financial considerations. We do plan to begin to share information on the development of our tentative budget with information planned on the operations and maintenance fund as early as June. Final bid totals will be used when developing the tentative budget for the coming fiscal year. Several bids have already been awarded by the board for the projects that are scheduled for this summer, and many additional bid recommendations are included on the agenda of tonight. We have several remaining bids, which will be recommended for approval in April. Work is scheduled to begin as early as spring break, once contracts are awarded to provide adequate time for project completion this summer. For the 2021 fiscal year, it is recommended that the budgeting for all capital improvement projects be done within the operations and maintenance fund budget. There's no longer a need to maintain separate accounts as the district is debt-free and not utilizing bond proceeds as a funding source, which is the common reason for using the life safety fund. And now, instead of using the bond proceeds as a funding source, we are paying for all of these projects within our annual operating budget and through the use of our existing reserves. Budgeting and accounting is streamlined through this practice and greatly reduces complications that are related to the timing of project billing and payments. To maintain transparency on project costs, both capital projects and life safety projects will be reported separately on the monthly financial statements that are provided to the board. Capital spending by year is highlighted by fund in yellow here on this slide in front of you. As just described, the operations and maintenance fund accounts for total costs that are related to projects in all three of the categories that we just reviewed. We have all projects that are, again, recommended to be funded through the use of our reserves. Item that I'd like to draw your attention to, which is also included, is that in 2022, which includes $7 million attributed to projects for land proceeds. While we did not discuss those and they are not planned for the coming year, we would be talking about a planned use to utilize some of the proceeds from the land and the best use of those proceeds to benefit our facilities and our students. In fiscal year '25, you will note that there are no costs that are allocated toward our life safety projects. We do anticipate that all projects will be complete by this time, and this year will be a year in which we would determine if we are going to do another study that year or determine the year in which the study would be completed. And then, while not generally facility-related, we do have the capital spending that is provided here for the other two operating funds, our transportation and educational fund. Those costs for our transportation fund are allocated toward the replacement of buses and other vehicles, and in our educational fund, typically related to technological needs within our facilities. So earlier this month, we shared information on our facilities and our financial forecast at our Budget and Finance Committee meeting, and following tonight's presentation, we will again provide an update on the five-year financial projection at the April 23 meeting. With both the financial projection and facilities plan having been previously presented, we have held a meeting date for April 16th and are able to hold that meeting if needed, but would have presented the two topics previously. We do have information, as I shared, that will be presented on the development of our tentative budget then beginning in June at the Budget and Finance Committee meeting. And with that, we'll answer any questions that you may have this evening.
Looks like no questions tonight.
No, I'm sorry.
Oh, go ahead.
I anticipated some. I do have just one. So, you know, in some of the projects that you just went over, you talked about card readers at various points of entry. I'd like to know how those points of entry are currently being controlled before those card readers are installed. Are those doors just locked? Are they in use?
In general, the front doors of the buildings are just locked, and there is a push-button electronic combination lock at the loading dock doors.
So during the school day at any of our District 211 schools, while schools in session, the front door is the only point of entry for anybody going in and out of the school? Am I right in saying that?
Without a key, yes.
Okay, okay. So if anybody wanted to go to any other point of entry beside the front door and they did not have a key, they would be redirected to that front door?
With the exception of the loading dock, yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item of business is our consent agenda. We have a suggested motion that the consent agenda be approved as presented. Can someone please move that?
So moved.
Do we have a second for that?
Second.
Roll, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Cavell?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. LeFever?
Aye. Next, we have special reports on communications. First, we have Freedom of Information Act requests. Next, we have our enrollment projections.
Just a quick question. The process for, without being too detailed, is it a group where you get together? Do you get numbers from the different, and are they good numbers? And how do they know?
It's been extremely accurate in recent years. Kathy Lingle does an outstanding job. She's within 100 students, I don't know for how many years in a row, but some longstanding track record on that front. So what we do is we work closely with the cohort tables in Districts 15 and 54 and then our local private schools. So we're able to tell how many kids are in kindergarten up through eighth grade, and we add all those up, and we have a little factor that we have for an adjustment, and then the projections are made relative to those so that we know which schools are going to see which growth over the span of the coming years.
Okay. It surprised me, I think if I read it right, the K through eight population is going down in District 15 and it's remaining about the same in District 54?
That is, yes, that's a brief summary.
Is that any reason why that might be?
It's just where new housing can open up and...
That's where it is, okay. I was surprised.
Yeah.
Okay, next we have an Illinois High School Association Letter of Appreciation/Recognition. And then that will bring us to unfinished business. First item, we have a proposed policy revision, drug and alcohol-free workplace. Suggested motion is that the Board policy file GBCC Drug and Alcohol-Free Workplace be revised as proposed and included in the Board Policy Manual, further that the superintendent be directed to make appropriate distribution. Can someone please move that?
So moved.
Do we have a second for this?
Second.
And discussion, please. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Aye.
That motion carries. Next, we have a proposed policy revision, student appearance policy. The suggested motion is that the Board policy file JFCA Student Appearance Policy be revised as proposed and included in the Board Policy Manual, further that the superintendent be directed to make appropriate distribution. Can someone please move that?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That motion carries. That will bring us to our proposed policy revision, student conduct. The suggested motion is that Board policy file JFC Student Conduct be revised as proposed and included in the Board Policy Manual, further that the superintendent be directed to make appropriate distribution. Can someone please move that?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That motion carries. That will bring us to new business. First, we have Electronic Learning Day program. We have a suggested motion that the Board of Education adopt the resolution as presented. Can someone please move that?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion here? Roll call, please.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Ms. Cavell?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. LeFever?
Aye. Next item of business, we have the one-to-one program and electronic device purchase. The suggested motion is that the Board of Education authorizes the district to purchase 2,975 iPads from Apple at a total cost of $859,800 to support the one-to-one learning program during the 2020-2021 school year. Can someone please move that?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Ms. Cavell?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. LeFever?
Aye. Next, we have the naming of Palatine High School pool facility. We have a suggested motion that the Board of Education declares that the pool facility at Palatine High School be named the Nancy N. Rob Natatorium. Can someone please move that?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Some questions. Do we have a process by which the Board or the administration goes through to recommend naming rights? I'm not aware of one.
Yes, so it happens in different facilities that we've named have had different processes and different, there's nothing formal, there's no formal policy on it. In consultation, certainly over the years of people familiar with Dr. Rob, excuse me, at Palatine High School and the faculty there still who are familiar with Dr. Rob strongly support it. She was certainly a longstanding employee here. I do have a little statement that I would like to, you know, to share about it, and then we review it at Administrative Council as well.
Yeah, I would hope that maybe we might develop a method for naming rights. I think that there should be some threshold for it rather than an ad hoc sort of process. I'm going to abstain from voting because I don't know Mrs. Rob. I just, you know, that is not a statement, I just don't know the person.
Yeah.
Your statement, yeah, please.
Sure, yeah. Throughout her 34-year career in District 211, Dr. Nancy Robb served our students, families, and staff members with vision, insight, fortitude, and the greatest compassion. Begin her career in 1980 as a counselor at Schaumburg High School, she was soon appointed into her first leadership role as a Student Services Director in 1983. Her care and expertise for students, her recognizable leadership, and her expertise for leading a comprehensive public high school led to her appointment as Principal of Palatine High School in 1990. Dr. Robb was beloved as the heart and soul of Palatine High School throughout her time as principal. In 2002, she was appointed as Assistant Superintendent, and two years later, she was again promoted to the position of Associate Superintendent for Instruction. Dr. Robb was appointed as the District Sixth Superintendent in 2009, and she led the district with clarity, strength, heartfelt care for all students, and instructional vision. After 34 years of dedicated service to District 211, Dr. Robb retired in 2014. But her service continues in many important ways, and she is always giving to the people and the students of District 211. I am proud to recommend that the Board consider my recommendation to name the pool at Palatine High School the Nancy N. Rob Natatorium.
There are no further questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Cavell?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Abstain.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. LeFever?
Aye. That motion carries. Next item of business is potential topics for future discussion. If there's nothing here, next item of business is committee reports. First, we have Northwest Suburban Special Education Organization. Ms. Klimkowitz is not here tonight. Do we have anyone to provide a report?
I don't believe so.
Okay, we will move on to the next item of business, which is Education Research Development Legislative Report. This is again Ms. Klimkowitz. Do we have someone providing a report here? Ms. Hummel, please.
Provide a brief update. We had our meeting last Friday. We had two guest speakers that were present at the EdRed meeting. First was Cook County Assessor Fritz Kegy, who was there to address EdRed regarding his proposed system of engaging in a more transparent and equitable assessment process for properties throughout Cook County. Assessor Kegy has proposed legislation, known as the Data Modernization Bill, that would provide his office with more information to uniformly assess commercial properties, and he walked us through what that would look like and how they would utilize that information in the assessment process. We then heard from Representative Gong Gershewitz, who talked about her role on the Property Tax Task Force Committee. She has reported that any changes on property taxes would likely not be reviewed until later in session. She also shared that this is going to be a very challenging budget year for the state of Illinois with many of the unknowns tied to the graduated income tax. She did describe that it is likely that we will see a budget that is developed and approved that will have appropriations, which are essentially held in reserve, which would be tied to the income tax passing, and should it not pass, those items would not be fulfilled within the budget. One of the items that she did mention as a strong likelihood of not being funded at 100% if that graduated income tax did not pass is that of the evidence-based funding, and in the event that were prorated, which is described as pretty significantly, would be, those funds that are available then would be given to the schools that are in greatest need throughout the state. So that's the summary of the meeting.
Thank you. That will bring us to partners for our community, Evening Community Services.
I was not able to attend the most recent meeting. I have nothing to offer you.
Okay, that will bring us to Budget and Finance Committee. We had the last Budget and Finance Committee meeting last week. The presentation was substantially similar to the presentation we received tonight, and that material from the Finance Committee meeting remains online on the Board Doc's website if anyone chooses to access that. That will bring us to our Facilities Committee Report. That will bring us to our Facilities Committee Report. Mr. Young and Mr. Dombrowski will report. Let's go with Mr. Dombrowski first.
Sure. Just, it, it was basically a not financial-heavy portion of the presentation that we saw today, just iteration and outline of the projects that are upcoming this summer, focusing on door replacements that are deteriorated, areas of roofing that needs to be done, fields, the Schaumburg Marquee, culinary labs, and, and the locker room. So the, the Facilities Committee, Committee meeting was, was basically what we saw here today, just in a more focused form.
Thank you. Mr. Young, do you have anything to add?
No, I don't.
All right, thank you. That will bring us to our announcements. We have the upcoming calendar. And let's see, we have completed all our closed-session items, so we'll move on to the motions as we normally come out of closed session. Our first suggested motion is that the Board of Education accepts the retirement requests of John Fajur, effective June 2021, according to the master contract of the District 211 Operations and Maintenance Group, and Amy Henning, effective June 2022, according to the master contract of the District 211 United Support Staff. Could someone please move that?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Ms. Cavell?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. LaFever?
Aye.
Next, we have a series of administrative appointments. Is there going to be any discussion about any of the administrative appointments? Okay. First suggested motion, that effective August 3, 2020, Michael Smith be appointed as 10-month Assistant Principal at Palatine High School at a gross salary of $115,000. Could someone please move that?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Cavell?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. LaFever?
Aye.
We have a suggested motion that effective August 3, 2020, Linda Sarafini be appointed as 10-month Assistant Principal at William Fremd High School at a gross salary of $115,000. Can someone please move that?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Cavell?
Aye.
Mr. LaFever?
Aye.
We have a suggested motion that effective August 3, 2020, Geno Joseph be appointed as 10-month Assistant Principal at James B. Conant High School at a gross salary of $115,000. Can someone please move that?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Cavell?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. LaFever?
Aye.
We have a suggested motion that effective August 3, 2020, Anthony Ganas be appointed as 10-month Assistant Principal at Hoffman Estates High School at a gross salary of $115,000. Can someone please move that?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Ms. Cavell?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. LaFever?
Aye.
We have a suggested motion that effective August 3, 2020, Jacob Hughes be appointed as 10-month administrator at District 211 Alternative Learning Academy at a gross salary of $100,000. Can someone please move that?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Cavell?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. LaFever?
Aye.
We have a suggested motion that employee David O'Connor be suspended for four days without pay. Further, that the board secretary notify said employee in writing of this action by the Board of Education. Can someone please move that?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call, please.
Ms. Cavell?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. LaFever?
Aye.
We have a suggested motion that the Board of Education shall provide an alternative school education program for student number 906630 for up to two calendar years for violating policy JFC. So long as student number 906630 meets the attendance, behavioral, and academic requirements of the alternative school education program, the Board of Education shall hold its disciplined determination in abeyance. If student number 906330 does not accept the alternative school program or meet the attendance behavioral and academic requirements of the offered alternative school program, then the Board of Education shall expel student number 906630 from Township High School District 211 for two years until March 12, 2022. The Board of Education authorizes the superintendent to notify the parties of the written decision as presented via certified mail. Can someone please move that?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Ms. Cavell?